Good evening, everyone. Can I call the meeting to order, please? It's 16:03. Oh, that's good. Welcome to, oh, yikes, Monday, May 27th. The month is over, almost. And we're going to start the evening with a land acknowledgement, and Counselor Killen is bringing that to us this evening. Counselor Killen, over to you, please.
Thank you. I'm so sorry that we have, I have this not called up right away there. There we go. So, the city of St. John, Mennequins, is situated on the traditional territory of the Wustakue, Malaseet, and Peskotomacotti. The Wustakue and Malaseet and the Peskotomacotti, along with their indigenous neighbors, the Mi'kmaq and Peskotomacotti, signed the Peace and Friendship Treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to land and resources.
Let's take a few seconds just to pause and reflect on our role. Okay, I'll ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem. Okay, next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next on the agenda is item 2.1, Approval of Minutes from May 13th.
Minutes from May 13th, Counselor Redwine and Counselor Harris on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is the approval of the agenda, and there are a few additions. The first addition request is for an update on Chesley Drive traffic disruption, which would be 16.1. Next would be 16.2, Resolution for Acting Mayor. Next, we have items from Committee of the Whole. The first would be 17.1, A Proposed Resolution Regarding Retail Drive Realignment. 17.2, Committee of the Whole Recommendation With Respect to City Market Lease. And 17.3, Committee of the Whole Recommendation With Respect to Temporary Term Extension for Trade and Convention Center.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Counselor Norton and Counselor Sullivan, on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Before I say next item, Counselor Hickey is on his way. Next item, City Clerk.
Next, we have disclosures of conflict of interest, if there are any.
Counselor Redwine?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to declare a conflict on 17.1. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stewart?
Same one, Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Sullivan?
I'll step over 16.2.
Thank you. Okay, next item, City Clerk.
Next is the, I almost said consent agenda, but there are no items on that. Next would be members' comments.
Members' comments. My comment is that I've never been to a, to a meeting where we haven't had a consent agenda, so. Counselor Redwine, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. There's lots coming up. Sophia Recovery Center is actually going to be hosting their grand opening on May 28th, which is Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. It's at 238 Midcalf Street. That's really exciting. There's also a multicultural Eid Bazaar that's going to be taking place June 15th from 1 till 8 at the Dennis Morris Community Center. And Walk and Roll Challenge is actually going to be taking place on Friday, June the 2nd, at noon, starting at Queen Square for Disability Awareness Week. And Champlain Heights actually has their Clean and Green going to be taking place on Saturday, June 8th at 11:00 a.m. at the Park in Robar Court. It's always a great event that I look forward to going to.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sullivan, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. We had a fantastic and very busy Finance Committee meeting last week, and we'll see more on that later in tonight's agenda. We received the unaudited financial statements for 2023, and just as we start to wrap up 2023, tonight I'm announcing that Shape Your City for Budget 2024, sorry, Budget 2025 will be opening tonight after the meeting, and it will be open from May 27th to June 14th. It's a quick survey that has 10 questions seeking public input for our 2025 operating budget. There are all sorts of links to city-approved plans, our long-term financial plan, our current operating budget. So that's part as we start our budget process for next year. We also do plan on having some Town Hall information sessions coming up as well, so those are yet to be scheduled. So get ready to hear lots of conversation over the next few months on our next budget.
Perfect, thank you. Counselor Killen, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. I want to thank both Anna and Natalia, two of my students from Ukraine, who invited us to go to the Ukrainian Yamarok Celebration just, just a week and a bit ago. It was at the Legion 69 on the West Side, and it was, I have this beautiful pendant painted by one of the Ukrainian artists there. And it was jam-packed, like the whole community showed up for this celebration, and it was incredibly moving when they did their National Anthem, and just knowing a lot of these stories and how displaced a lot of these folks are here in St. John, away from families who are still there, and it was just incredibly moving to see that in person and to really celebrate their culture. Brent's little daughter still has her braids in from when that was done by one of the gals there. It was just really cool to see them sharing their culture with us. And big congratulations to the cast of The Crimson House Murder at Barnhill Memorial Middle School. They had a great, like, sold-out shows every night, and the kids, you know, middle schoolers usually think that they're not engaged and they're not into it, but these kids were all super enthusiastic to be part of the show and did a great job. So congratulations to all the little ones there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy?
Thank you, Your Worship. The City of St. John is seeking applications now for consideration for appointment to the North End Neighborhood Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee will provide feedback and advice on the goals, objectives, policies, and implementation for the North End Neighborhood Plan. They will champion the plan within the community, promoting and encouraging the public to participate in the public engagement process. Anyone interested in serving on the North End Neighborhood Advisory Committee is asked to submit an application in confidence using the city's website. If you want more information, you can call the City Clerk's office at 506-658-2862. On another note, Your Worship, I want to congratulate the St. John Chamber of Commerce for hosting the first inaugural State of the Region event that you spoke at last week. It was the first time that we've had municipal leaders from the St. John region, including St. John Fundy St. Martin's Hampton, Chrisfam, Sisrossi, Grand Bay Westfield, along with about 200 business leaders come together for the inaugural State of the Region event. It was a real hit. It was the first time in history, and we're really looking forward to it next year. They hit all the highlights of what's going on in this region of ours, all over the region, and it was really, really well-attended. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Okay, next item, City Clerk.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation, 7.1 on the agenda, and this is for Disability Awareness Week.
Whereas the municipality of St. John is committed to assisting citizens with disabilities to participate fully in our community, and whereas many persons living with disabilities face barriers in the areas of employment, access to information, transportation, housing, education, recreation, and other disability-related supports, and whereas we believe that more citizens with disabilities should have the chance to access disability-related supports to improve their opportunities in New Brunswick, and whereas we support the theme, embracing accessibility, inspiring change. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Donna Nodreardon of St. John, do hereby request the citizens of St. John to join with our council in recognizing persons with disabilities and their role in the community by the observance of Disability Awareness Week, and to hereby proclaim the week of May 26th to June 1st, 2024, as Disability Awareness Week in the city of St. John. And I will say, look for some activities because they usually do have something going on on those weeks. So I've joined them many times. Thank you. Next item, City Clerk.
Next item is under our Bylaw section, and it's item 10.1, and this is for a Municipal Plan Amendment, Zoning Bylaw Amendment, and a Section 59 condition in Section 131 agreement at 241 to 281 Douglas Avenue.
I'm passing this over to Commissioner Pofenroth for the introduction, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and members of council. Before you this evening for third reading is an application for a municipal plan amendment and rezoning that was submitted by Diamond Schmidt for the property located at 241 to 281 Douglas Avenue. This application seeks to change the designation of the properties to Major Community Facility and to rezone the properties to CFM, Major Community Facility, to permit the expansion of the NB Museum. The application received first and second reading on May 13th, following the required public hearing, and I can now confirm that all legislative requirements of the Community Planning Act have been met, and the team is now before you to move forward with third reading. And Jennifer Krishner is online if there's any questions.
Okay, I'll go to Counselor Sullivan first for a question or...
Thanks, Your Worship. I actually don't have any questions, but our process, a bit of a reminder for the folks at home, you know, we don't pass laws all at one meeting, so you can have a couple of weeks for sober second thought and be able to think about things. And certainly, many of us were challenged over the last couple of weeks with regards to the property, one of the properties involved in the municipal plan amendment. That's also the property at the center of the Heritage Rule Change. And formerly owned by a fellow named Scott Crawford, who, without Scott, there's probably no one change in St. John. Without Scott, there's probably no TRC in St. John. It's a fellow who's given a lot to our city, and fortunately for Moncton, he's now giving a lot to Moncton. But he put a lot of love and care into that home. And the reason I bring this up is as, as we kind of celebrate what's going on with the museum, it's worthwhile thinking about pieces that we are losing in this heritage home and a well-loved property. But for myself, you know, taking that challenge on and reconsidering what we're putting there. So the museum, part of our approval is a smaller parking lot than we would regularly put for this size institution. And if it's not going there, the other opportunities are to cut down some trees on the hill out back and lose that nature spot, or lose park on the other side. So the big win is the museum. Which of the losses we have to accommodate that, when I think about it and did reflect on it, you know, unfortunately for, for some of the homes, and this one that was shown a lot of love, I did circle around and reconfirm that for planning and for property, this is, in my mind, the right decision for St. John. But I do want to give a shout out that it is with respect to the work that folks do in their heritage homes in St. John.
Agreed, and appreciate you bringing that perspective because it is an important one. But everything we do, as we say, is a balance of what we gain and what we lose, and always trying to mitigate that. Counselor Killen, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, so 40 years ago, almost to the day, I was brought home from the hospital to that home. So my parents were the owners of it from 1982 to around 1990. So, you know, my family, as soon as they saw this, were like, you know, you gotta, you know, fight against this blah blah kind of thing. And, and like, to Counselor Sullivan's point, it's like really thinking broadly about the impact and what this means for the community, and no matter how much of a sentimental attachment you may have to a place, right? But ultimately, we're stewards of the entire community, and to me, it's like the benefit of seeing this museum, which we've been just desperate for, for so long, to come to fruition, and to know that they still are dealing with a number of parking issues that are, are important, that they're going to figure out how to bus staff in and to make it easier. But we still really want this place to be accessible to the community, and, you know, this place is really close to it, and like, grew up going to the park next to it, and I would hate to see that go away. So it just really, it's like been a very interesting journey to think about this property, and we'll always have these photos of me and my little sister in front in the garden forever. But we need this to make sure that we can preserve, you know, 300 to 10,000 years of history in this place. So I appreciate that everyone took this so seriously as a decision. I'm sorry I wasn't here last week, but I just wanted to share that and know that it really was a careful consideration of that property, so, thanks.
Thank you. And they will have the historical videos for, that'll stay on the record as well of that. I mean, you know, it's something. It's not everything, but it's something, yeah. Counselor Redwine?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make a quick comment too. You know, at Heritage, unfortunately, Heritage meetings are not televised. We had a lot of questions and in-depth conversation about the Heritage property there on Douglas Avenue. Just for council, I'm sure it's in our packet, but it is actually, it's Heritage Designated Park that's on the other side, which would have some grave restrictions on. And I do have one question for planning, because I can't remember exactly what it was, but there was a lot of just consideration given as to, could they actually build back? Or could they put the parking lot across the street? Like, we had in-depth conversation at Heritage, and I think that everybody thought that I would be voting against it because I've, I've voted against every Heritage property being de-designated except for this one. But to put a parking lot across the street, council can totally appreciate that we have some traffic calming issues, which we're having a file come up tonight for. And so, you know, you certainly don't want all kinds of public crossing the street. But question over to Commissioner Pofenroth. Can you remind me, I thought that there was some sort of indigenous significance to the back of the building. Is that right? I can't recall. It's been a while since I had this conversation.
Commissioner, over to you, please.
Yes, through you, Your Worship. I don't know exactly the details, but there definitely is significant areas in that proximity to the building that are very important from an indigenous perspective. Jennifer Krishner, if she's on, could provide some more feedback there. But definitely, it was a, a significant path for the indigenous folks. I see Jennifer is, is online. She can probably weigh in here. Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Worship. I can clarify. So the applicant did do extensive archaeological assessments in the area. The area's been long known as a portage site, and there's significant materials that have been found within the area that would prevent them from moving to the rear of the site. So basically, the area that can be developed on is largely aligns with what has already been disturbed. Everything else is, significant materials were found, so a variety of indigenous, cultural, religious, and other sites as well.
That's, that's great, Jen. Thank you for confirming that for me, because I was sure we had this great discussion. So we were kind of thinking, was there another way to build the building, right? And so, you know, because to remove a Heritage property, it looks like it's for parking, but it's really for the overall project to be able to go forward. And so anyway, so I just wanted to kind of make note of that. There was, it wouldn't have been able, easy to go into the park area. It wouldn't have been easy to go in the back area. And to have a parking lot across the street could be very dangerous for the residents and anybody going to the museum. So, so anyway, I mean, if, if it's going to go there, I mean, the greatest thing about this is that the museum will now be designated. And so that was the real kicker, I think, for most Heritage to say yes. Anyway, food for thought, but I certainly appreciate, and that's why I was asking questions about whether or not they would be using the architecture of the property if it was... of the property if it was, you know, in good condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Norton?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, I guess I'm, I'm really pleased with some of the comments from Counselor Killen and, uh, and the good questioning from Counselor Radwan and Counselor Sullivan. There's lots of Heritage heroes in our community. And, um, as you said, Your Worship, a lot of the decisions we make are balancing what we gain with what we lose. And we can't say it better than that. But a lot of these heritage conservationists, I do want to take another opportunity. You mentioned Scott Crawford. He was, he was somebody that invested a lot of time into that. And he's certainly, um, been passionate about this discussion and, and engaging in what's going to be built there and what we're going to lose. It's that type of discussion that helps us come to, um, something that's best for the community as a whole. And, uh, I know that we heard a presentation from, uh, from the architects themselves and the design team, that hopefully there is an opportunity that some of the built historical artifacts coming out of these homes, um, will have a chance to relive within the, uh, the Greater Museum. So, um, thank you to all those that have invested in time in these properties. And we know that some of them aren't being inhabited right now. But nonetheless, that maybe they'll have a, a secondary home, at least pieces of them within, uh, what's going to be a, a brilliant, uh, brilliant demonstration of, of modern-day architecture and, uh, and showing what St. John, uh, St. John can host in terms of a world-class museum. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, deputy?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I'll just wrap it up by saying, you know, like, I know Scott Crawford. I think, uh, you know, I've got a great amount of respect for the man. He's done a lot for St. John. And, uh, it's not about Scott Crawford. It's, uh, it's about, you know, making hard decisions. And, uh, unfortunately, every decision that you make, there's going to be people that are hurt by that decision and people that are, are helped by that decision. And, uh, the idea is to try to, you know, help as many people as you possibly can and hurt as few people as you possibly can. And I'm really saddened by the fact that, you know, this house had to go to make this happen. Uh, I felt really bad. Uh, I still do. But it's for the greater good. And, uh, and I think that, you know, knowing Scott the way I do, he's had to make some of those decisions himself through life. So I think he understands, at the end of the day, that, uh, it wasn't done lightly. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. I will say though, it is tricky for the Heritage heroes because we're losing a little piece of Heritage, but then we're gaining this institution to protect the Heritage. So it gives us, you know, it's tricky. It's tricky to, it's tricky for us anyways. But it's, it, for anyone that's done any Heritage work, it's like, should I get rid of this, you know, the made staircase? Should I try to keep the original? But what's going to function better for my family? There's always those decisions when you're dealing with a Heritage building. And at the end of the day, even when you do your own building, you've got to figure out what works best for you. And so this works best, I think, for the city of, uh, St. John, works great for the province. So happy to move forward with it. So over to you, City Clerk, for our motions.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, so this one requires six motions. Um, before we start though, just a reminder that Counselor Killen was absent for the public hearing and therefore shouldn't vote on the third readings.
Oh, okay. All right, so...
So this one requires, uh, six motions. And to begin with, it requires, um, municipal plan amendment, uh, two votes, a reading by summary, uh, and a reading by title. Then zoning requires approval by reading entirety, Section 59 approval, zoning by title, and then Section 131 agreement approval.
Okay, so we'll start with the municipal, municipal plan amendment approval, approved reading by entirety, correct? On there? Yeah. All right. Deputy? Counselor Redwan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Oh, sorry, Counselor Killen, apparently you are supposed to withdraw. Is that a, you're, yeah. All right, so we'll call the vote again, will we?
Please, yep.
Okay. Approval by, uh, so we've got the reader, the mover and the seconder. So on the question, uh, all in favor? Oppo, sorry, an opposed, motion carried. So that's to approve reading by entirety.
And, and in this case, we advertise that it's quite a lengthy one. So I'm able legislatively to read just a summary of this one unless there's an objection by council.
No, John, you go right ahead for the summary.
Okay, so the title of the bylaw is, uh, "A Law to Amend the Municipal Plan Bylaw." And, uh, the summary is " requested amendments are to the municipal plan's city structure map and future land use map and zoning bylaws, zoning map to facilitate the expansion of the New Brunswick Museum onto adjacent lands." "The subject site is currently designated stable residential and park and natural area in the municipal plan. A municipal plan amendment is required to redesignate the subject site to major community facility. The subs- subject site is currently zoned park and mid-rise residential. A rezoning to major community facility is required to facilitate the building and site expansion."
Okay, so now I'll take a motion to approve reading by title. Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Stewart on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
"A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw."
Okay, so now I'll take a motion to, uh, for the zoning bylaw amended to amendment to approve reading by entirety. Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Stewart on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
And this is titled "A Law to Amend the Zoning Bylaw of the City of St. John." And the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John enacted on the 15th day of December 2014 is amended by rezoning a parcel of land having an area of approximately 2,000, 21,048 square meters located at 241 to 281 Douglas Avenue, also identified as PID numbers 003-79230-551-72860, and a portion of PID number 55222129 from park, mid-rise residential and major community facility to major community facility pursuant to a resolution adopted by common council under Section 59 of the Community Planning Act.
Okay, so now for the Section 59 conditions, I'll take a motion to approve the conditions. Counselor Redwan and, and the deputy on the question? All in favor? Oh, sorry, is there a question?
Sorry, no, I'm, you're correct, Your Worship, sir.
Opposed? Motion carried? Okay, then we go to the zoning. You don't have to read anything on that one.
Uh, the zoning, just the title of this one?
So the zoning bylaw amendment, I need a motion to approve reading by title. Counselor Sullivan and Counselor Stewart on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
"A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John."
Okay, on the Section 131 agreement, I need a motion to authorize the agreement. Counselor Harris and Counselor Redwan on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Is that it for you reading?
Thank you, yeah, that's it for that item, and now, uh,
Next item then?
10.2. So 10.2 is the Heritage Conservation Areas Bylaw that's attached to this file. And again, two motions for this one, approval by third reading in entirety and approved third reading by title.
Okay, so I'll pass it over first to Commissioner Pofenroth for the little introduction.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, Your Worship and members of council, before you this evening for third reading is an amendment to the Heritage Conservation Areas Bylaw that was submitted by Diamond Schmidt for an amendment associated with 241 Douglas Avenue. The application is seeking to amend the Heritage Conservation Areas Bylaw to permit the removal of 241 Douglas Avenue from the Douglas Avenue Heritage Conservation Area and to provide clarifying language associated with a historic encroachment. The application received first and second reading on May 13th, following the required public hearing. And I can confirm that all legislative requirements of the Heritage Conservation Act have been met, and the item is now before you to move forward with third reading.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I need, as the clerk said, two motions required. The first one is to approve, uh, a motion to approve reading by entirety. Deputy and Counselor Harris on the question? Oh, sorry.
Um, Your Worship, my apology, we're in the same issue.
Oh, sorry.
This is the second bylaws, I see it with that file.
She's got that little step there, doesn't she? Yeah. Okay, so now I can call the question? I've got a mover and a seconder, and I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
"A law to amend the St. John Heritage Conservation Areas Bylaw." "The St. John Heritage Conservation Areas Bylaw enacted on the 23rd day of September 2019 is amended by amending paragraph 21D by adding immediately preceding as illustrated and listed on Schedule D, which forms part of this bylaw, is hereby established as Douglas Avenue Heritage Conservation Area, excluding the encroachment of the structure located at civic address 277 Douglas Avenue, PID 55222137, onto civic address 281 Douglas Avenue, PID 552-22129. And number two, amending Schedule D Douglas Avenue Heritage Conservation Area by removing from the Heritage Conservation Area a parcel of land having an area of approximately 584 square meters, including buildings and structures thereon located at 241 Douglas Avenue, also identified as PID number 003-79230, and by adding the written description immediately following on the schedule, excluding the encroachment of the structure located at civic address 277 Douglas Avenue, PID 552-22137, onto civic address 281 Douglas Avenue, PID 55222129."
Thank you. So I need a motion now to approve the reading by title. Counselor Stewart? And the deputy on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? All right, next item. Okay, we'll get our counselor back. Killen? Counselor Killen? Next item, City Clerk?
Thank you. Next item is 12.1, "Traffic Safety Improvement Plan for 2024."
Okay, I'm handing this one over to Director O'Reilly.
Uh, I've got to declare, sorry, a belated conflict on 12.1. My wife is involved with one, the school's involved with the project.
Oh, right, yes, okay. All right, thank you. All right, yep, okay. So Commissioner Huguenot is going to do the introduction first, so I'm passing that over to you, please.
Yes, good evening, Your Worship, members of council. Uh, as both council members and Public Safety Committee members have been briefed on before, uh, the demand for, uh, citizen-driven traffic enhancement requests has been far outstripping our ability to assess and implement improvements. Uh, we have been trying to move more towards a more proactive, uh, approach to dealing with these issues. Uh, we expect that approach to feature the development of strategies and annual plans such as shown in the report before you this evening. Uh, with further details, I'm going to turn it over to Director O'Reilly, who is also our, uh, traffic engineer for the city. Tim?
Uh, thanks, Commissioner Huguenot, and, uh, good evening, Your Worship and council. Um, so yes, as Commissioner Huguenot was mentioning, um, we do receive a large number of requests from the public to deal with the traffic, uh, safety issues within our community. We're just going to deal with speeding, pedestrian and, and cyclist requests for crosswalks and bike lanes, different warning signs, including for a motoring public. Um, looking at the speed limits across the community, or how much parking is regulated, and even how we manage truck traffic within the community. Uh, we have about 150 or so requests per year that we get from the community to deal with different traffic issues around, around the city. We can deal with about 15 to 20% of those every year. And so what's that generated over the years is a backlog of about 700 requests from the community, uh, to deal with these different, uh, traffic safety issues. And that backlog can be generated at two different points in the process. We have an initial investigation process to find out what the true nature of the issue is from the community member and find out what solutions we can put in place to help them out. Um, and then the second level of, of work we do is, once there's a need for something, is to actually get some work done on the street. So there's a backlog on both fronts related to those projects. Um, and like I said, we can only, uh, deal with a, a percentage of those each year we get from the community. So we are, um, we are continuing to transform the way we, we manage traffic safety within the community. Um, I guess as I always say, you know, the citizens' requests we get and the feedback we get from the community is, is very important to us. Um, and will always be, because it generates, if, if nothing else, um, the importance of these issues within our community and need to address them. But we're using that feedback we get from the community in a slightly different way, more and more. Uh, so instead of always relying specifically around those requests and trying to deal with them, which again, we know we're never going to catch up on, is trying to find other ways to manage traffic safety in our community in a more holistic way, to make sure that the limited resources we put into these pro- programs are helping as many community members as possible. So of course, the overarching transportation plan in the city. Um, as just for a small example, we have all of our bike lanes identified for future installation within our community. So if we get a request for a bike lane, we already know what our, our vision is to make sure that our community is appropriately connected for that mode of transportation. Um, we will be general, completing in the, you know, in the coming years, a, a road safety strategy, which looks at the different collision history within the community, working with other partners such as the Amish New Brunswick, emergency services, school district, et cetera, to again, try to find the, the best ways to use the limited resources to improve safety in our community. We generate topic-specific, uh, programs as well. So as an example, thanks to the federal funding we got a couple of years ago, we generated an overall crosswalk improvement plan within the community. Again, looking at from the overall risk perspective and finding out where those crossings are most needed and the most dangerous locations. And again, we're identifying a multi-year plan for those crosswalks to be installed. Wherever we can, we, we align, uh, those plans with strategic plans across the city, whether it's our climate action plan, Act SJ, or in the growth side, our different, uh, community improvement plans. And of course, we're starting one in the, the north end really soon. So we try to align with any of those plans as well, um, in terms of where we focus. And again, as we've talked about before, we are moving more towards that holistic 3E approach of managing traffic safety within our community. So obviously, the engineering solutions to improve safety on our city streets, working closer and closer every, every year with our St. John police force to align with where they do enforcement within our community. Um, and also educating the community on what they can do to improve safety within their, their community. Uh, you'll be seeing within the next coming days, two weeks or so, our first road safety education plan within the community, which we did highlight to the road safety strategy, which again, focuses on different educational components that the community can use to, uh, help improve safety. Um, aligned with our asset management program within the broader community, we're looking at, you know, the insulation costs for some of this traffic infrastructure, not only the initial insulation cost, but also what it takes to look after that important infrastructure year over year to make sure that the, uh, resources are there to look after them. So with all that said, we still have to make improvements year over year to make our, our streets safer. And we're proud to have another plan for 2024 to, to make a number of locations within our community safer. So we did that trial last year on McNamara Drive out in East St. John with a specific type of traffic calming called speed cushions, very successful. We saw the average speed reduced by about nine kilometers an hour on that street. Uh, so again, a significant improvement in safety on that street. Um, almost half of that overall 700 backlog of requests within our community, um, are specific related to concerns regarding safety on our neighborhood streets. So it's a real issue within our community. So we're taking the success of McNamara Drive, um, again, expediting the use of these speed cushions within different parts of our community to again, address real speeding issues within our, with our, with our neighborhood streets. So we are pleased to have, uh, a plan to install these on five additional streets within City St. John in 2024. Four of those five have already been identified, including Cedarwood Drive and Millicival, uh, Douglas Avenue, Spark Cove Road, and Dever Road. And we're still in the process of adding one more, uh, street to complete in 2024. Um, this work does align with the 10-year strategic plan for the city as well as the, uh, city manager's initiatives plan by ensuring that we have, uh, 20 major traffic calming solutions completed over the life of that strategic plan. Um, data plays a huge part in, in, uh, dealing with, uh, speeding within our community. We always ensure that when we get a request from the community that it's backed by data to substantiate an actual issue with speeding on a neighborhood street. As we always say, we got to identify a problem before we can develop a solution. So in some cases, the community request, uh, doesn't result in an actual observed level of speeding. Um, and we move on from that street, but sometimes they certainly do. And again, the, the four streets identified here are certainly fit within a criteria of our traffic calming policy. Uh, we also use that speed data in a number of cases on a follow-up study to ensure that the actual results the city wants, the committee wants, which are reduction in speed, is actually being achieved. And again, that's why we, uh, we're choosing these speed cushions because they have real measurable results and reduce- results in reducing speed. So we're going to do all five of those projects this year in 2024. In addition to that, we are going to be installing a signalized crosswalk just on the east side of River Valley Falls Bridge that's going to cross Chesley Drive. So that's going to be a style similar to what's on West Monroe between the two malls where Walmart is, just warrants that level of protection because of the amount of traffic on Chesley Drive. So we get a lot of requests for that crossing. Again, a number of members of council have indicated that as well. And in addition to that, we're just going to see continued growth in pedestrian activity in this area as the hyperpasses continues along the Cove and into lower west, and again, eventually along Douglas Avenue towards where the museum is. So certainly, this is going to be a huge benefit for the community. And I mentioned that earlier crosswalk program that we literally just finished a few weeks ago. We're implementing that program right away as this crosswalk is recommended as part of that project. It's great that it's Disability Awareness Week. We work very closely with the St. John Ability Advisory Committee. We meet quite often with them to update where the priorities are from their perspective within St. John from a transportation perspective. So this intersection at Garden and Colbert is actually the first installation in City St. John for what's called a rapid flashing, rectangular rapid flashing beacon crosswalk. So it's the solar-powered wireless crosswalk system with the flashing lights on either side that was installed in 2014 or 15, and I believe is the first installation within the region. So we've had discussions with the Build Advisory Committee, and they've identified that as a priority to be upgraded with an accessible pedestrian system, which is the audible cues to help those with visual impairments to get across the street safely. So we'll be upgrading that crosswalk system on all four corners with APS in 2024. Another project which has come up a number of times, and again, is also highlighted in that recently completed crosswalk plan, is the opportunity to get pedestrians safely across West Monroe Road in the area of Ellerdale Street. Very large residential population on Ellerdale Street and a very highly-used transit stop on the other side of the road. So we do have a marked crosswalk a little bit further down the street. It's not well positioned because there is no sidewalk on the same side with the transit hub. So we're going to be moving that crosswalk closer to where the transit stop is and upgrading that crosswalk again to rectangular rapid flashing beacon crosswalk and APS for those with visual impairments. And so that will be completed in 2024 as well. We do have a number of school zones we're going to be upgrading as well in 2024. So we're very proud to say that within St. John, there are 17 middle or elementary schools where we've implemented over about nine years traffic calming around them. Pretty big number, and we're pretty proud of it. But we continue to have consultations with the principals or the parent support committees related to different schools, and they, you know, want to see different upgrades with respect to their particular school zones. So the existing school zone for, or sorry, for Lockloman School, which is on Evergreen Avenue, we did reduce the speed limit on that street a number of years ago, as well as on Lockloman Road, and we do have a driver feedback sign right now on Evergreen Avenue. But we did get, and a signalized crosswalk as well for kids to get across the street over to Evergreen Avenue. So we did get a request that actually went through council a couple of years ago from the parent support committee for that school, looking to have the driver feedback signs installed as well on Lockloman Road, which is also part of the school zone for that school. So we are happy to plan to have those installed in 2024. Likewise, First Centennial School. So Centennial School, we do have an active school zone for that school as well as a signalized crosswalk, but it focuses more on the front part of the school on Milledge Avenue. Again, another correspondence, which again, is attached to this report from the parent support committee for Centennial School, which advises that a lot of kids actually travel on the backside, especially from the north end, along Visart Street and the backside of the school. So our school zone right now doesn't extend all the way to that key crossing location that Visart and Adelaide, so we are going to be extending that school zone to include that, so the reduced speed limit, as well as installing again, an RFB crosswalk right at that location at Visart Street going across Adelaide Street. So we'll have all the infrastructure installed for that with respect in 2024, and then we'll come back to council later on in 2024 because we'll have to get the support for the recommended traffic bylaw change for that extended school zone. Likewise, again, for PES School, I met with a representative of the parent support committee out there. So again, identified school zone, quite large around PES. You can see all the yellow streets around that school are all 30 kilometer-an-hour speed limits within school times and days. And there's again, an RFB crosswalk right now to get across over into the playground on the side street there. But there's a gap identified by the school for kids that are coming, especially from the Mount Pleasant Avenue area, five corners, to get down and get across the street safely. So we'll be installing a marked crosswalk across, again, Park Avenue to get over to the school for kids who live in that area. And again, that'll be done in 2024. Likewise, again, for, for out of East St. John, we're going to be installing for Glenfall School. So again, same thing, we have in yellow various streets that are currently 30 kilometer-an-hour speed limits, again, focused primarily on the front of the school. They did make a change during COVID of children being dropped off on Tim Street, which is the green shaded street here on the screen, which is kind of new resulting from COVID. So parents drop kids off a lot from that location and take a side path into the school on the backside, which is shown in red here to the front of the school. So, or the backside of the school. So we did get a request from the principal of that school to identify Tim Street as a 30 kilometer-an-hour school zone. So we'll be doing that as well in 2024, and likewise, come back to council for the necessary bylaw change later on this year. St. John, again, very twisty, turny road, a lot of hills, a lot of turns in it, no doubt about it, both on the east side, west side of the city, and certainly in Milledgeville. So we have a couple of requests from the community to deal with those sightline issues that are as a result of those turns in the road. So both Mystery Lake Drive and Cedarwood Lane in the Milledgeville area, both, we've confirmed after talking to residents in those areas of again, blind spots trying to get in and out of those two streets. So again, the intent with those two streets is to make changes to how traffic flows in and out, to reduce again, that issue of trying to get out on a busy street around a blind turn. So we're going to make some changes to how traffic flows in those two streets. And again, same thing, we'll be back to council with the necessary bylaw change for that one. Also for 2024, again, this has been discussed at length at council before, but we will be implementing the planned changes for Heatherway, closing down two of the streets as part of a road diet for that street and keeping two streets open for the traveling public. Just a change, though, an important point for council, as we were originally identifying that the two northbound streets would be closed down and the two southbound streets would be left open. Just through some more consultations and especially access to fire hydrants along that street, we've made that change where we're going to be closing down the two southbound street lanes and keeping the two northbound lanes open to traffic. So this is a switch in terms of which two streets are open. So that road closure is going to be initiated by barricade signage and paint. So we'll implement that early on in 2024. We'll let the public have a chance to see how it works as is, and then we'll, as we already promised, go back to the community to engage with them and find out what the long-term plan would be for Heatherway after they've had a chance to see how that works. And again, I missively didn't talk about our capital program. So the city's doing every year a better, better job at making sure that our capital program is making sure that they're right for the community. So not only making sure that the infrastructure for all of our streets are properly reconstructed when they need to be reconstructed, but making sure that we're taking care for the community as a whole and certainly incorporating wherever possible, whether it's traffic calming, modes of transportation additions such as bike lanes on these streets. So we're looking more and more at that, or simply just making sure that the roads are as narrow as possible to avoid that traffic calming and to reduce asphalt. So certainly, as part of the Charlotte and Sydney Street Projects, which has been talked about before, we'll incorporate those components. Borishead Road Sidewalk will be extended, which again, gains access to two schools in Milledgeville. And Garden Street project, again, very important project for the city. Both intersections that are at that location will be upgraded with accessible pedestrian systems, again, for those with visual impairments. And what's also exciting with that project is we're going to be making changes to the medians where it connects on to City Road and Station Street. And when that happens, we'll be able to implement a road diet and implementation of bike lanes on City Road and Station Street, which has to be part of the transcanter trail through St. John. So really excited to be able to implement that after that project's completed. So really, in conclusion, you know, again, whether it's capacity challenges or just our ability to deal with concerns of the community with respect to traffic safety, we are limited sometimes in what we can do. And again, acknowledge what council provided in this year's budget, initial $75,000. And as you can see with a list of these projects, it's going to go a long way to make our community safer. So we do thank you for that commitment. But again, at the end of the day, we will be limited in how much we can get done. We are already starting to develop our plan for 2025. So we have a full slate for 2024, but again, the demand's there, the projects are there, and so we're already working on next year's plan as well. And there will be need for those projects wherever those risks identified. And as, but as I mentioned, to complement those community requests, which again, frankly, be very difficult to actually keep up with, we're using those proactive holistic plans in place to make sure that resources are invested where the best improvement for the community. And so with that, your worship, it's a receive and file recommendation from city staff, but certainly want to give the chance to update council what our plans are for this year, and certainly happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So it is a traffic safety improvement plan for 2024. It is a receive and file for us. I've got a few questions. Counselor Ogden, you have some questions on the report?
Yes, and one suggestion. You said we're only reacting to 15% to 20% of the citizens' requests, which in my mind is a failing grade. And we're spending more and more money on upgrading brand-new roads, which I'm sure people like to build brand-new roads. It's really exciting. But we're not taking care of what we own, and we haven't for a long time in this city. And the neglect is causing people safety concerns. Talked to some people the other day on the river road, part is concrete, part is asphalt, part is nothing, and then the part of asphalt are holes. And then Wellsie Avenue, I could name them from where I'm getting calls. I suggest that you're planning for 2025 and you are saying you want to listen to citizens, that you pull back the money that's going into these beautiful concrete sidewalks, which a lot of citizens will never enjoy, they'll be dead. And instead of building all these brand-new roads, let's fix what we have. And we have lots of places that need to be fixed. And I don't know if we have a saying, council, that because you say you're doing the planning now, but I hope that we will start to pull back on all that money going into brand-new roads and concrete, fix what we have so that people are safe. There's people that every day walk those sidewalks, they're unwalkable. And we can say, well, you're going to get a new concrete sidewalk 10 years from now. Well, that might not mean anything to them. So I would suggest that our financing department look at really the needs of citizens, because if we're only reaching 15% to 20% of the ask, then that is not success. So I would like to see us maybe react to a 80% where citizens are not, and that's a financial situation that you guys are determining when you're building these brand-new concrete sidewalks and roads and digging up. Imagine the cost is immense, but I really think we've got to start taking care of what we own. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. And if you heard Counselor Sullivan today, he announced that Shape Your City will be opening for the budget. So this is where we'll get our feedback, and we'll run with that from the citizens. Counselor Hickey, you're up next.
Thanks very much, your worship. I just mentioned the Counselor Ogden's point. A lot of the funding for new roads is bilateral. We depend on federal funding for those roads, so it's use it or lose it. Either refund it or we lose the other half of the money that we're getting. Tim, my question is from a capacity perspective, and we've talked about that a lot, especially on this file. What is the right capacity? What gets us at a point where you feel we can be timely, we can be nimble, we can test out more effort, similar to speed cushions and things like that? Like what is that right capacity?
Well, I guess I'll just reiterate first that again, as staff, our job, and we are proud to do this, is to use what we have to the best of our ability, right? So we're continuing to strive to do that, and I think it shows. I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, and not to repeat what the mayor talked about, but it's, to be frank, it's at that budget time, right? And in terms of the decision by council as to what level of service you want to achieve with different service levels, and to build up what the mayor talked about, you know, 2025 will be our first year related to preference-based budgeting. And so as council, you'll, you know, have even a better view of what you're actually achieving with the service levels you're obtaining, including this service. And really, if council, you know, would like to see changes in that, whether it's this service or others, you know, that would be the time to discuss it, right? As part of that process.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. My next question, we're talking about narrower roads. How do we integrate narrower roads when we're not doing the entire stretch of the road? Right? Like I think about Waterloo Street. I know I bring it up ad nauseam here. But we did it in three segments, right? So the excuse the first time that we couldn't narrow the road was because the rest of the road wasn't narrow enough. And then we ripped up the next section and said, well, we can't narrow that section because the other section that we just did isn't narrow enough. And then we did the next section, and we did the same thing. How do we, how do you better integrate that vision? And also, how do you piece it together when the pieces may not fit right?
So one of the things we're continuing to look at are looking at the corridors of streets and designing the entire corridor. So as an example, Charlotte Street, you know, we did have that plan in place, was going to be multi-year plan for Charlotte Street. So instead of looking at it piece by piece, looks the entire length of Charlotte Street so that we're designing it holistically from one end to the other. We're looking at that right now with respect to Crown Street and Broad Street, because that's the next step of hyperpasses, continue towards Robert Park, is how is that street going to be designed holistically so that we have that overall view of the street, so that we know what the design capacity is going to be and the width needs to be. So I think we're getting better at that and making sure that we're looking at streets holistically that way. It's just a matter of improvement, can use improvement along that.
And we can do it.
We can, like I said, we have that vision and that multi-year plan for an entire stretch of a street. You know, we're learning from that and looking at it in terms of that entire stretch of road to design it the way you want to see it in the future.
And are we on track with the two strategic priorities outlined in there? We've got 20 traffic calming aims and then 20% of our travel being sustainable? Any brief update on that? Sorry, your worship, I know I'm over my time.
So yeah, so again, we have five traffic calming projects already on this list for 2024, so we're well underway for the 20 over the years. Certainly, we're reaching that 20% sustainable transportation. It's going to take pieces of this, you know, but it's also going to take the community as well, right, in terms of changing how they use transportation. But certainly, the investments that the city and transit are making in terms of our transit system are continued move towards having interconnected bike lanes, making pedestrian corrections, like Borishead Road where there's missing stations, are going to allow citizens to use other modes and get towards 20%.
Thank you, counselor. Oh, City Clerk? Or City Clerk. Sorry.
Thank you, worship. Just in terms of Waterloo, I just wanted to chime in as well. Because there are different segments, like the lower section has alternate side parking as well, whereas the upper end does not have alternate side parking. So that was a consideration that needed to be looked at in terms of placing snow and then moving it throughout the year and allowing for that movement of traffic from one side to the other.
Thank you. Counselor Harris, over to you.
Doesn't sound enough for everybody to hear, but. Tim, through your mayor to Tim, since I've gotten here, one of the things that I've been struggling to figure out is what is the need to achieve this level of service that you're saying we need to set? And when do we get to set said level of service? And you and I've had many conversations, and we both agree, you know, having a growing list of traffic calming requests, we are not able to crank down below, you know, the 300 numbers, not, it's not the level of service we're trying to achieve. So I guess I look at this budget piece, $70,000, and I knew when we approved it for the budget it wouldn't be enough. And I knew when we approved it for the budget, it wouldn't be enough to do anywhere near what you would dream to do. But you say it hits 10% to 15%. I assume simply upping the percentage of that budget by that equivalent to cover, you know, another 40% or 50% is not, is not how it would work. We, every, every situation would need a different solution. But I look at some of these more simplistic solutions, almost itinerant even in usage. And I look over at what we did across from Superstore and the rail line that goes there with just these little bumpers that don't put a permanency in the road of narrowing, but cause there to be a narrowing in the road. And I just wonder why, what are those costs? And how can we deploy them faster? Because I want to go into budget 25, like this is a priority for me. I mean, I ran on this in my campaign three, three and a half years ago. And I've been struggling to figure out how to resource this and to target them at those low hanging fruit solutions so that we can deploy something in a way that's going to drive those numbers down as we develop the budget for the more permanent solutions, the nicer sort of median and like bulb pieces that we've seen with grass and planters and all that. So I guess I'm just asking for help here on
Sure.
how to best advocate for this to our finance team. And especially around this idea of like immediately deployable, smaller scale solutions.
Yeah. So, so yeah, so again, as I, to reiterate, like we do a lot of those small solutions as well. Here's one example. So we don't stay away from doing those, which make a lot of improvements. I think what I'm starting to hear, you know, from a lot of members of council, that there's an interest here to, to look at it. So I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll take it away and see what the art of possible is so that we're prepared for those discussions for the 2025 budget, to see what the art of possibility is around those resource levels. And we can give you some better indication at that time, what, what we can get for different levels of, of support.
Yeah, I think I would love to get us down to, you know, 200 by the end of the term at the very least. That might be pie in the sky. Anyway, over to you, mayor.
Thank you. Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, worship. Tim, you know what? It's nice to have these conversations. We're in a position now where we can actually talk about, you know, improving our sidewalks and our streets and not cutting back. And that's a good place to be. And I'm particularly happy because I'm seeing things happen now that, you know, five, seven years ago, I talked about, and there was just no way it was going to happen. And now it's come to fruition. So we haven't forgotten about it. So I know there's a lot of happy people. I noticed for those of you that live in, in the Milletville area, like Bedell and Daniel and Marlin, all brand new sidewalks, beautiful job, by the way. And now we're looking forward to calming, traffic calming on Cedarwood, Douglas, Sparkle Road. Those places are, you know, key for safety, you know, things to be put in. So I really want to thank you and I want to thank council for the, you know, the years of hard work that we did to get to where we are today, because this didn't happen overnight, you know, and our financial team, and I know Gary Sullivan's here somewhere. But, you know, that's, those are the people that we need to really thank for being able to do what we're doing today. And it's all really good work. And thank you very much, Tim.
Thank you. Deputy Counselor Killen, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Thanks for doing this, Tim. I know this is like a really big topic and there's all kinds of controversy in the community, often with traffic calming. So, okay, I want to go even smaller than what Counselor Harris was talking about. What about like switching a yield to a stop sign? What about things as small as that? Like how much capacity do you have as your team to look at some of these like micro issues?
Yeah. So I think, I think, I think it was deputy mayor, or maybe the mayor put it earlier, like when you make a change, it's positive for some, negative for others, right? So from our perspective, we look at all those just to make sure it is, it is the right change. Now, a lot of those don't take a lot of investment
Right.
of time and energy. But when you, when you add it up to like 700 backlog,
Mm-hmm.
you know, it's, so and the purpose for this presentation is to talk about that we are doing things, right? And we're doing the best we can with the resources we have. But undoubtedly, you hear them, I hear them from members of community, that we just can't get, get to them all.
Right.
But no, certainly, there's lots of examples. I know we, you know, we did a three-way stop there.
Yeah.
Little while ago. So we're doing those small projects and we're continuing to do those. But it's interesting with three and four-way stops, like, you know, sometimes we'll, we'll put them in because of requests and then other parts of that neighborhood say, well, we don't like those and vice versa. So
Yeah.
it's important to look from an engineering perspective. It's the right thing to do even for those small signs.
Yeah, my latest one was the C Street, Dufferin Row. They're both yields and someone's like, no one knows who's supposed to go. So I, these ones come up, that was a new one for me recently. And it's like, okay, yeah, I'm sure you'll see that on your list.
Absolutely.
Coming up. So thank you for that explanation.
Counselor Redwin?
Thank you, mayor. So I have a potential solution there, Counselor Harris, is fiscal tax reform. But that's a whole other topic. I think ours, I don't think we could get a better chief finance officer. I just like to say that. So, but you can only, like you said, Director O'Reilly, do with what you have. And we're trying to stretch it all different ways. So I did want to thank you because these improvements at Lockland Road, like there's been numerous things done. And I know the community appreciates it and still working on things. Reversing Falls, I've even had calls on. So this is great news. School Zone in Glen Falls, I've driven you crazy about that too. And the change to Mystery Lake, I just want to give a little credit to Beverly, one of the residents who, actually, this was her idea. Residents sometimes end up finding solutions. And it's like, well, Director O'Reilly, what do you think? Do you think that would work? And so anyway, having a one-way street there, I mean, getting calls that there's literally been an active accident. And then pictures of other ones is really upsetting in my role. And so, you know, I'm so glad to see that that's going to be going forward. And I'm just wondering, I mean, here we have over 700 requests. Three years ago, when we were sitting here, it was over 400. So how are we going to like mitigate this going forward? Obviously, could be more money in the budget for this. And I'm also wondering just if you have any idea when we're going to do the consultation for Heather Way. So.
Yeah, sure. So what a question there. Maybe the easy one last about Heather Way. It'll likely be in the fall, we'll do that.
Okay.
Right? So we'll give a few months after we install them, make the changes, give people a chance to look at it. And then, but we'll advertise it obviously publicly. I, I guess you're, the other, and again, I want to go back to this, right? Like, again, the community requests are very important to us and, and we'll continue to activate, act on them. But again, as I mentioned, like for us, it really tells that this is important to the community is the biggest message we're getting. But again, making sure that we're investing the right place at the right time, right? That best suits the community are really these transformational changes, right? That
Absolutely.
council's already supporting Move S.J., you've already support, you're already supporting asset management. Like, all these things are coming into play, right? And so again, whatever level of resources council can admit to this file, right? You can be assured that we're incorporating these items. So we're using those in the best, in the best ways possible, right?
Well, it's hard. I mean, you're trying to deal with sidewalks too. And, you know, I know, I think I'm the only person that doesn't have two dogs in my neighborhood. They're all using the sidewalks every day, right? So, you know, and walking, they're walking with the kids and all the things. So it's like, how do you make sure that the best thing's being looked after? So anyway, it's good. Hopefully, we can get a lot of people putting in their insight in the public consultation. Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Ogden, I guess you're the last one. So back to you for round two.
Yeah, Tim, thank you for this. And I think you're doing a good job with the limited budget you have. I hope that we increase that budget drastically. But I think the public has to be clarified, and this is for the public and for the council, is I don't think the public understands that Reversing Falls Bridge, Chester Drive, Harbor Bridge, its exits and entrances in the Stanley Street Pedway, which we get a lot of calls about all these things, belong to the province, the Department of Transportation Infrastructure, DTI, which some people don't even know what that means. But that's the province. And so when, when people are directing their hostility when something happens, I think they should think about calling the provincial representation and say, look, these, these are infrastructure that you belong to, and we need them fixed. So I, I say that to the public because sometimes they don't understand it. And, and we take, we take to grit because of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor. I have a quick question, Director O'Reilly. When you say in the report that not all of the requests are, you know, are doable because they either don't align with regulations municipal or federal, and they, they're not best practices, and they won't produce the result that we're looking for. So what approximately percent of those requests would be that? Are they pretty much legitimate requests? I mean, or things that would align with that? Or are there some things there that just wouldn't work?
I guess first of all, I mean, the concerns are all legitimate. Like, there's, there's very few citizens I talk to where they don't have a legitimate concern with the situation. But it's sometimes it's about a perspective, right?
Right.
You know, is there an actual speeding problem on that street?
Right.
Or did you just happen to see a car go by quickly on that, on that certain day? So I think all the concerns are legitimate. It's just a matter, again, of, you know, we could implement a solution, but it could cause a problem somewhere else, right? We did the speed cushions on McNamara Drive, for example. It, it, it trafficked to slow down, but it also caused traffic to be diverted onto an adjacent street.
Oh, right, sure.
Right? So
Yes.
so sometimes we may be solving one problem only to create another problem. And, and transportation's a system. So, but in terms of percentage, I guess to your point, you know, for, for traffic calming, we're probably about, you know, 40% to 50% of requests come back as being not, not warranted for traffic calming. You know, we get the results back and the speeds are well within the speed limits.
Right.
Right? So that, that gives you an indication as, as to that percentage. But again, oftentimes, you know, a citizen will come to us with a problem, and they'll have an idea what the solution is. But it's our job as staff to identify what the real root of their problem is and to work with them to actually solve the solution. So sometimes the solution we come up with by working citizen is different than what the solution they might have already identified as. So, so we don't always do exactly what they ask, but, but we certainly take all their concerns seriously and try as best we can to solve them.
Yeah. Great report. Appreciate it. I've got a question for Commissioner Fudge, if you know it. I'm just curious, what would the transportation budget be a percent of our entire budget? Would you have an approximate idea?
May I? Yep. The transportation budget's approximately 27% of the overall budget.
Well, that's pretty steep. All right. Okay, perfect. All right. So you have your information there. You've got your updates. So I'll ask for, receive for information. Deputy and Counselor Ogden on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks again, Director. Next item, city clerk.
Thank you, your worship. Next is item 13.1, an update from the Growth Committee, City Market Resourcing Request 2024.
Deputy, over to you for the intro.
Thank you, your worship. Your worship, it's the recommendation of the Growth Committee that common council approve a new 10-year. On the recommendation of the Growth Committee, common council approved a new 10-year strategic plan, which includes 65 actions that will enhance and transform the St. John City Market while maintaining its treasured history, including significant changes to the inside of the market and surrounding property. To successfully support the implementation of the plan and expedite select initiatives, the Growth Committee recommends that common council approve up to $200,000 from the Growth Reserve to hire a project manager on a contract basis for three years, generally as presented to the Growth Committee on April 16, 2024. With that, your worship, I'm happy to move the recommendation.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? Counselor Sullivan, on the question, anyone have any questions? Question? I'll call the question then. On the question, all in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is item 13.2, a Finance Committee update regarding St. John Nonprofit Housing Inc. request.
Counselor Sullivan, I'm sending this one over to you for the intro.
Thank you, your worship. This was an interesting one. I'll move the recommendation first and hit the trivia.
Okay, seconder, Counselor Redwin. Excellent.
Thanks, Counselor. Since 1986, the city has held just under $60,000 in a fund that was established on the sale of Rockwood Court Housing Project. And that money has been hanging around since 1986, labeled for St. John Nonprofit Housing. So staff received a letter from St. John Nonprofit Housing requesting that those funds be released to support the Wellington Project. So that's why it's before us tonight.
Okay. So I've got a mover and a second on that. Anyone have any questions on that item? If not, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Next is another Finance Committee item, 13.3. And this one is Transit Purchase Electric Vehicles Requests for 2023 to 2024 Capital Budget Adjustment.
I'm sending this over to you, Counselor Sullivan, again, please.
Thanks, your worship. Again, I'll move the recommendation.
I'll take a second on that recommendation. Counselor Redwin?
Thanks, your worship. Finance Committee received a request from transit staff for an adjustment in their capital budgets to support the purchase of our six short electric buses that we have that are supporting the Flex service. The original plan was that funding from ZTIF, which is a zero emissions transit funding, ZTIF, from the federal government would support the purchase of these buses at, at the end of the lease. The federal government, bless our partners, we're still waiting to hear back with regards to that funding. And the lease is coming up. So the company that is leasing the buses to us has had to change in business practice. So they're not interested in leasing the buses to us anymore. So anybody who's leased a car at the end knows at the end of your lease, you either purchase it or drop it off at the dealer. So we're recommending a change in transit capital budgets. It's not new money. It's a move from items, other items in their capital to purchase the buses so we can keep that service moving forward while we continue to speak to our federal partners about the ZTIF funding.
Okay, sounds good. So I'll take a question. Counselor Lo, you have a question on that?
I don't disagree with the recommendation. I disagree with most of the other components within it. This was never brought to the Transit Committee, which has three counselors, Brent, Greg, and myself, plus four citizens. This was never mentioned, it was never in a meeting, we never had it. If we had it, there would have been questions we would ask. I know I get three or four questions. I mean, just the idea of buying six buses that are electric is, is a challenge within itself because we have no record of what happens in the fourth, fifth year. These other buses that run diesel are workhorses that went 18 or 20 years. But all I'm saying is that in no time was this discussed with the Transit Committee. Why do we have a Transit Committee? And then when you look at the very end.
I'll, I'll pass this one over to the CFO.
Pardon?
Pass it over to the CFO.
Before I'm done?
Well, you asked, you know, why didn't it come to you? So
Oh, okay. She's going to answer. Okay.
I thought he'd answer that.
Yeah, through your worship to the counselor. It's a great question. What's before you this evening for approval? Is it budgetary approval? So it really paves the way, provides you the funding in order to, if Transit Commission decides to move forward with this purchase, they can. The original budget was under the premises that it was leveraged funding. It was under the assumption that the city portion of the funding would be used with other levels of government. And now that's not the case. So we thought it was important to bring it before council for that amendment, that approval. I understand there's a meeting on June 13th at the Transit Commission. So at that meeting, I think, I think the decision on whether they want to execute that option could happen at the Transit Commission meeting on June 13th. But the budget needed to be approved tonight.
So just setting up the cash in case you want to do that.
Well, okay.
So any questions, I guess we'll have to go to your transit team. Are you going to?
Correct. But, but when I read this document, it says input into the report had been sought from the finance and supply chain management. Nothing from the transit.
No, because we, you, you had the money, we, we thought you had the money from a different source. We're not sure you do now. And so we're making sure you have the money from this source. So you still will have the money. If you want to do it, you do it. We're just putting the money in your bank account, counselor. And then if you're going to spend it on the buses, because we thought you had it from a different source in your bank account, but you don't. So we're making sure that you do have it. We'll follow up from the other perspective.
All right.
Okay. So we've got the motion on the floor. We've, so I'll take, I'll call the question then. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Next is another Finance Committee report, Housing Accelerator Funding 2024 Budget Amendment.
Counselor Sullivan, back to you again.
Thanks, your worship. The housing accelerator funding that we receive from the federal government and as a whole group of committed staff and committee looking after it, this is just approval for the budget that has been developed because we got the money after this year's budget was created. So for all our other policies that we track budgets and monies to fold it into this year's budget, that's what's before us tonight.
Okay.
Oh, I'll move the recommendation.
Thank you. I'll take a second on that. Deputy, on the question? Deputy, on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is item fifteen point one on your agenda. And it's a number of citizen letters with respect to sixteen seventy-one Sandy Point Road. There's a recommendation from staff to refer this to the Growth Committee.
Excuse me, deputies moving the recommendation. Counselor Sullivan seconding it. Counselor Killen, you're going to speak to it.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, this is a record number of letters received about this one. So I'm just, I would love to know from staff what is available to us? What does it take to rescind a motion? Like, what are we looking at here when it comes to this issue? Because I unfortunately was not present the night this went through. And it just, there's a lot of outrage over this one. So I'm just wondering where we're at with it.
Oh, you're going to go ahead? Okay.
Yeah. This item has been referred to Growth Committee, and it's on the agenda for tomorrow in terms of a presentation by the Friends of Rockwood Park. So once Growth Committee reviews and hears the details of it, then I think, you know, they'll identify a path forward from there.
Okay. So does rescinding a motion take it two-thirds of council? Is that correct? Yeah.
City Clerk, over to you.
Yeah, but it does, it has a number of restrictions. So you can't rescind just any motion. So we'd have to look into this one. Anything that can't easily be undone isn't always necessarily rescindable. So if that's a word. But yeah, it does require a higher threshold to pass it. But I would recommend if council's considering that, refer it back to staff so we can lay it out for you properly how you would rescind it.
So just for, so the, you know, the public's probably watching this. So we'll go back to Growth, and then they'll make a call. And then potentially it may go to staff and then may come back to council, depending on what decisions are made in that path?
Well, anything that goes to Growth is only a recommendation back to council, right?
Right, okay. And then staff will be involved throughout.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so on the question?
Yes.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is fifteen point two, a letter from Jay Kennedy, Request for Proclamation Democracy Day. And the recommendation is to refer this to the clerk to prepare the proclamation.
Refer to clerk to prepare proclamation. Counselor Redone? Counselor Sullivan, on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is fifteen point three, a letter from NBE Medical Education Foundation, Request to Present. And there's a recommendation to deny the request to present and direct CAO to follow up in writing and explain the rationale.
So I'm going to send this to the CAO just to explain that right now.
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, this request to present from the New Brunswick Medical Education Foundation, they're requesting, based upon the president, presentation enclosed in your kit this evening, that the city of St. John provide funds in the amount of $20,800 annually for a period of four years to support student scholarships in the medical field. So in accordance with our financial policies, scholarships for individuals are not eligible for funding. Furthermore, I would note that Envision St. John just last month launched a bursary for medical students by using some of the funding they receive from the province that's geared towards physician recruitment for the region. So through Envision, two bursaries are now available, each valued at $2,500 annually and renewable for four years, so totaling $20,000 in financial assistance. While I do have the recommendation here to deny the request to present and to direct me for follow-up to the Education Foundation, given it's really based upon the requests not aligning with our financial policies. However, if council would like to provide them with a platform on the basis that they do not request financial contribution directly from the city, then, you know, we could provide an alternate recommendation on that basis. In that case, we'd just change slightly to say, accept the request to present on the condition that the New Brunswick Medical Education Foundation not request financial contribution directly from the city of St. John. So a couple of options to consider.
Thank you. Counselor Norton?
I, thank you. Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you to the CAO and his office and the work that he's done in a reconsideration of this motion. I'd move that we provide a referral to the common clerk for scheduling of a presentation by the New Brunswick Medical Education Foundation here in chambers.
Okay. I've got Deputy McKenzie, before I call the question. I've got a couple of comments. Deputy McKenzie, over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Worship. Yeah, I definitely want to give them the opportunity to present, understanding the restrictions we have on our policies. I would definitely, when you contact them, say that, you know, we can't necessarily address that at the meeting. But that doesn't preclude a change in policy going down the road. This is a really good group. They're doing really good work getting doctors to stay in St. John. And I think a lot of the public would be supportive of, you know, helping them out. So I would definitely support bringing them in with that understanding. Thank you.
Sounds good. Counselor Redone?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, CAO McGovern. I appreciate you reconsidering this for me. I did really want to be able to give them a platform. And if they want to put out and ask for other people to support, then that would be fine. But following our policies is very important. That's how we're able to make traffic calming investments is because we're trying to be fiscally responsible. But I'm sure a lot of other people would love to support. And we want to be able to help them grow and thrive in the city so that we can grow the population. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sullivan?
Thanks, Worship. Just a quick question on the motion. Is the motion straight up to invite them in to talk? Or is the motion to invite them in to make the presentation, ask the community that's not us for support? Or is the motion being open to the invitation to ask council for support?
Counselor Norton?
Yeah, Counselor, to your question, I think all three of those, I think, would be acceptable at that time. I think it's within council's purview to either explain that we have a policy that wouldn't allow us to contribute financially. At that time, we take it under advisement, and it's a conversation for a later date. But regardless, we give them an opportunity to come in here and present. I know that there's been conversations with Mr. Ryan, who's the chief fundraiser, that he understands that council currently has a policy that would perhaps prohibit or limit our ability to donate directly. But Envision St. John does receive funds where they can contribute financially. So I'm sure that he'll come in and be sensitive to what restrictions we have. And at the same time, it might give us a sober second thought about how we contribute to them going forward.
Okay, so Counselor Ogden?
Yeah, I think we should do everything we can do to increase the number of university students in the city and all post-secondary students. So if we can help them raise money, and we have a profile, that we should do that, respecting our own rules and regulations. So I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so we've got the motion on the floor. And maybe CAO you can speak to, as we had said, about the policies and how they apply, et cetera, do you think?
Yes, yeah. I'd be happy to give them a call, Your Worship, and have that discussion with them in preparation for their presentation, if that's available, counsel.
Good. Counselor? Are we all good?
Absolutely. I'm just wondering if I could add one more thing to that? If I can get Counselor Lowe, who seconded it. I'd also add that we refer Mr. Ryan to Envision St. John to make a presentation as well. So they're well aware of the work that this group is doing in not only attracting but retaining physicians to our community.
Okay, so we can, got the motion on the floor to offer to bring them in, let them present, and we will suggest in the meantime that the city manager, the CAO, will give them a call, explain what's happening, what our policies are, and that he can refer them at the time over to Envision for further follow-up as well.
Thank you, Your Worship.
So that's the motion, I guess, on the floor. We got that, City Clerk?
I believe so. I think we can keep it simple and just refer it to the clerk to schedule. They can present what they like. And also refer Mr. Ryan to Envision St. John for an additional presentation.
All right, sounds good. Okay, so the motion is on the floor. It's been seconded. So I want to call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Excellent. Next item, City Clerk.
Thank you. Next item was added. It's sixteen point one. And this will be an update on Chesley Drive Traffic Disruption.
Okay, we're back to the traffic talk. Director O'Reilly, we like this one.
Sure. Thanks again, Your Worship and council. The residents of St. John, particularly those that have lived on the west side, have endured several years of traffic disruptions with the Harbor Bridge being shut down with multiple lanes. We know that as city staff. You know that as members of council in your community. So in recent months, when New Brunswick Southern Railway approached the city of St. John looking to do a work at a rail crossing on Chesley Drive, which accesses Ocean Steel. As we always do, we had certain expectations for that work when it was to be done. One of them was around communications, to ensure they take the lead on communications so that the public understood what was going to happen and when, so they can plan their routes accordingly. And a second one, arguably more important, is we did have the expectation that when they did the work, it would be done on a weekend, and it would be done by seven o'clock AM that following Monday, which was supposed to be this morning. And the contingencies be put in place to assure that that happens. So no work is done past seven o'clock on Monday. So as council knows and as a community know, that did not happen this morning. The work that proceeded to that rail crossing, they continue until approximately eleven o'clock this morning. We do understand, and I know it's in the media now, there's an apology from Ocean Steel, which you know is one of the two players involved in the work, about the disruptions to the community. So, but we do know what happened is unacceptable, and I suspect the council agrees the same. So although the city of St. John did not lead this work that was happening on Chesley Drive, we are going to be taking the lead on an after-action review with all stakeholders involved to have assurances in place that something like this doesn't happen again. So as part of that after-action review, it'll be the different regulatory bodies, obviously NBE Southern Railway, the city of St. John. We'll ensure we have clarity on responsibilities around rail crossing work within the community in different situations, what the proper level of communication is and by whom and at what time, especially related to major rail crossing work, what the accountability is around these rail crossings, to have clarity around that, both from the road authority's perspective and the rail perspective. And ultimately, to be able to ensure that accountability is met and what happens when the expectations are not met. So that after-action review, what will happen, you know, in short order, with, again, with the motivation to ensure that something like what happened this morning does not happen again. So I'll pass it over to You, Worship.
Thank you, Director O'Reilly. I've got a couple of questions, comments here for you. Counselor Harris, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we were talking about this earlier, too. And I just, I think we have to be willing, as a council, certainly in my opinion, for us to look at all options here. Very familiar that in other jurisdictions, there are fines issued for this types of negligence. I think that's something, I know you're saying we're not sure where we start and stop on the authority spectrum. But where there's a question, we should, I think, be willing to push it because with the Harbor Bridge tied up the way it is, this is, you know, life or death in many cases. So it'd be my position, anyway. I'll leave it there for us to pursue a little more draconian approach to this because it's just highly unprofessional. It's highly unacceptable.
Thank you. Counselor Norton?
Thank you, Worship. I guess for the benefit of the public, Mr., thank you to Director O'Reilly. He's been at the keyboard and the phone lines and in person since early this morning when this started to take place. So I know personally and professionally, we really appreciate all the work you've done. This wasn't, Mr. O'Reilly's presentation was not on the agenda this evening. And, you know, these sorts of things only come up when something pressing happens. We understand that this has been pressing on the west side for quite some time. And we see you, you know, we hear you, and we stand with you. You know, just by way of frustration, I understand that commute all too well. And the fact that when we look at other neighboring communities, and it's not to compare apples to oranges, but it's in the public purview, and one can't help but think how the Princess Margaret Bridge has twenty-four-seven road infrastructure or construction going on. It's going seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. How long it took for our Harbor Bridge to receive, you know, the construction that it did, it was many years lobbying to get that done. And now it's a multi-year project that has congested the west side getting to and from. Yet we're seeing work in other communities happen at a much more accelerated rate. We only have two ways in and out of the ward. And in some cases, this isn't just resulting in late classes and schools and emergencies and appointments and work. In some cases, it's preventing emergency vehicles getting in and getting out. Westsiders as a whole have reached a limit, and we need a solution. And corporately, we do. We expect better out of our corporate partners that call our community home. And they operate, and we thank you for all the work that you do and the opportunities that you bring. But when there are deadlines and times to be met, at the very least, we expect the communication to go off, giving forewarning so that people can make alternate arrangements. And that was never received from them. And as a city, we're going to do better at, I guess, a bit of a post-incident report, seeing what we can do better. But at the same time, we need to come better, do better. And westsiders do deserve better. So thank you for the opportunity to speak on it. And thank you for holding a little bit more patient with us westsiders as we work through this issue.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Killen?
Thank you, Worship. I think Director O'Reilly commented on this earlier, just this rock and a hard place we're in with some of these critical intersections where, you know, we don't own the rail system as a city. We don't have jurisdiction over Chesley Drive. There's so much that we have to work out when it comes to our partners. And the west side feels forgotten. And I feel like this is like the straw that broke the camel's back this morning with people missing critical appointments, with people, you know, doctors not being able to get to the hospital. There is various significant issues with this. And I don't think our corporate partners, our provincial partners, fully recognize the breadth of frustration that we feel every year when the bridge goes down two lanes again. I don't know how to get it through to them. I hope our news partners up there can publish our frustration in a very strongly worded manner because it's really untenable how far this has gotten for westsiders every day in the nicest months of the year to have to wait for, you know, tons of time just to get to work. And unfortunately, in this society, we all have to go to work or else we cannot, you know, function. So if they want our economy to grow, if they want people to have these jobs, if they want to do these things, they need to be better partners. It's incredibly frustrating to watch this continue on and not see anyone have any fire under them to complete some of these critical tasks in an industrial city that has been an industrial city since the beginning of its origin. So I really hope that this is something that they take extremely seriously and take to heart, that they can't keep doing this to the west side. You know, there's even Realtors on there saying people are, housing values are not as good and things like that. Like, it has a critical impact on so many different levels. So I appreciate the city taking a leadership role in figuring out what the best course of action is to do to make sure this never happens again. And I'm not trying to pass the buck, but this really is an issue with partners. And if we had better notice, better ability to handle the situation, we would have, I fully know that and fully confident in city staff that they would have done whatever they could to help mitigate this issue had they not been surprised by it. So, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Ogden?
Yes, this morning on Douglas Avenue, I witnessed school buses trying to pick up children when traffic was diverted from Chesley Drive, a provincial road that, as a city councillor, I didn't even know was going on because we weren't notified. And so then Douglas Avenue became congested, and children are trying to get out into school buses, and you couldn't move. People couldn't, one place, I was stuck for an hour. And I think when I hear that a bridge in Fredericton is allowed to work 24/7, get their money, get open, and with St. John generating the most tax dollars over the last 60 years, I feel like we're second-class citizens. And it's not just the tax dollars we had taken away. We had power taken away over education, transportation. And it's not being proven very good for St. John to have Chesley Drive, Harbor Bridge, reversing Fall Bridge, all our main arterials controlled by people sitting in Fredericton, who, they take care of their bridge. But what about the city that generates the most tax dollars? They don't seem to take us serious. The only times they take us serious is when they, on our tax dollars, which we are a huge, largest industrial base east of Hamilton. I'm sure everybody would love to have our tax dollars, but we've lost our power, and we've lost our tax dollars. And this morning was just proof of it, when we're not even notified of what's going on on these provincial arterials. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Deputy?
Well, thank you, worship. I guess I'll wrap it up by saying, you know, really, I, I don't understand how, you know, an organization could say it's not our fault. We're not responsible. I get calls today saying, I called, you know, the railway, and they said it's not our fault. Well, the agreement was to have the job done by 7:00 a.m. That's a Sunday night, lowest traffic, have it done by 7:00 a.m. If it's not done at 7:00 a.m., it's not the city's fault. It's the, you know, it's the subcontractor, whoever didn't get the job finished. But the, the problems that that caused are just unbelievable. I can just imagine how many people were heading for the hospital that couldn't get there, heading for schools and late and, you know. I mean, this is just unacceptable. So I don't know how we can hold them accountable, where it's, it's not our road, it's not our railway. But, you know, if there's a traffic violation or something like that, they should be held accountable in some way, shape, or form. And I'm really happy that, you know, we've taken this opportunity to say in the future, this is going to be a whole lot harder to do because we need those things, you know, in place. So thanks, Tim.
Okay, that's it for questions. I just want to say thank you for bringing us that update. We really needed that, to hear that, and for the public to hear that. And I think that, I think that the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure needs to hear that. So maybe they need to hear from the citizens on the west side as well because we are frustrated with what's going on. If it was up to me, I mean, it's not our road, and it's not our rail line, it's not our this, it's not our that, but it's our citizens we're trying to get through. So I'd send a nice big fat fine if I could, like up $100,000 or so, to make sure it didn't happen again. Anyways, but once we find out our scope of authority, and if we can, that's what we'll do. Thank you, Director. All right, so I'm going to take a receipt for information on that one. Counselor, Counsel, Killen, counselor. Radwan, sorry, on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, city clerk.
Thank you, worship. Next is item 16.2, and this is a motion to appoint an acting mayor. And the motion would read, resolve that pursuant to Section 48 Sub 5 of the Local Governance Act. Counselor Sullivan be appointed to act in the place of the mayor for the period of June 5th to June 11th, 2024. And while so acting, Counselor Sullivan possesses the powers and shall perform the duties of the mayor.
Okay, so I'll just briefly explain this. The reason I asked Counselor Sullivan is one, we're, the deputy and I are both going to be owed at FCM, or the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. We're going to be gone from the 5th, because the thing starts on the 6th, till the 10th. We're traveling back then. So we're going to miss the next council meeting. I ask Counselor Sullivan because he's on PAC, and that night, there are four public hearings. So rather than reschedule the public hearings and re-advertise them, I thought I would ask Counselor Sullivan because he's familiar with those, and he's already had an opportunity at PAC to vote on those. So this will put him in this chair where he's not voting. It'll give him four, it'll give him eight counselors here that night, and then he'll only vote if there's a, if there's a tie. So that's my rationale, and I'll take a mover and a second. Counselor, oh, I'll take these. Counselor Norton and Counselor Lowe, on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Excellent. Thank you. Next item, city clerk.
Next is 17.1, a recommendation from Committee of the Whole with respect to retail drive realignment and extension of Clearview Agreement and property acquisition closing dates. So the resolution for this reads that the city enter into an amending agreement with Clearview Homes Limited and Orion MC, Inc. in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on May 27th, for the purpose of extending the city's conditions precedent in the amended and restated land acquisition agreement dated December 21, 2023, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said amending agreement and any documents ancillary thereto are necessary to give effect to the transaction. And number two, that the city enter into an amended and restated conditional agreement of purchase and sale with Carl Ellenberg in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on May 27th, 2024, for the purpose of extending the city's conditions precedent and closing data, the acquisition of lands and building located at 26 to 28 Retail Drive, identified as PID 309005, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said amended and restated conditional agreement of purchase and sale and any documents ancillary thereto are necessary to give effect to the transaction.
Okay, so I'll take a mover. I got the deputy who's a mover, seconder, Counselor Sullivan, on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item?
Next is 17.2, and this is City Market Lease with Boyd's Own, Inc. And the resolution is, resolve that the city terminate the current lease with City Market with Boyd's Own, Inc., DBA Javamoose, under the previous resolution from MNC 2020-208, install 8 and 9 and ancillary space in the City Market, and further be it resolved that the city enter into a lease generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on May 27th, 2024, for stall 9 and ancillary spaces in the City Market with Boyd's Own, Inc., DBA Javamoose, and further be it resolved that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute any necessary documents.
He'll take a mover and a second here on that. Counselor Redwan and Counselor Norton on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item?